All right, that's good movement here. It is 5:30. I called the regular meeting of the Mashpee School Committee to order. First item of business is pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The Mashpee Public Schools recognize and honor the many generations of Wapoona people who live and have sustained in this territory for more than 10,000 years. First item of business is to ratify the agenda. There is a big item that's missing from the agenda, which is an update on the superintendent search. I would like that to be added to the agenda. We had immersion to do that.
Would that put us at risk of any open meeting policies or laws if we're placing that currently?
Yeah, I'm not sure you can just add something that big. I think when you write, I think you can move things around, but the public would have needed notice that that was going to be added. I guess in the fairness of transparency sake, I would like to postpone until it can be on a posted agenda. That is my personal thought on it, but I don't know what my other colleagues think.
Well, that will require us then to post an emergency meeting for Monday.
We have a meeting on Monday.
Right.
We have until Friday to, or tomorrow.
Actually, I guess we don't need, we don't need it because as long as we post the meeting for the interviews on Monday, that's fine. Okay. Okay, that's fine. We can do without that. That does mean we won't, we will not get a update from the consultant.
Is he here?
Yeah.
And I understand, I understand what Kathy's saying about transparency, but if we don't say something about it, that we have interviews and all this stuff that's going to go on, on the 27th, then the public will not be aware until...
Tomorrow when the agenda's posted.
Tomorrow when the agenda's posted.
Do you anticipate a vote on any of these things you've got to discuss for decisions being made, or is it informational?
This is informational only.
Mike, I still stand by that concern that, you know, there's been quite a bit of discussion in the community about transparency, and to place something last minute on an agenda, I feel goes against what the public has been clamoring for, so that would be, again, I defer, I mean, I'm one of four right now, so if someone makes a motion and it gets seconded, it's just, again, my thoughts on that.
What is happening on the 27th? Sorry, I feel like...
Interviews.
More than?
The actual finalists.
The actual finalists, interviews.
You had said you were stepping down and you couldn't attend them, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, cool. Just trying to wrap my head around.
Yeah.
Got it.
And there is a posting that will be made tomorrow for that, along with another posting for a meeting to be held on the 29th after the...
Supreme Council.
Supreme Council Advisory Joint Meeting.
Yep.
That will happen at 6:30 to discuss electing a new superintendent.
Awesome. That's good.
All right. Hang on a second, let's move on then. Do I have a motion?
Did somebody make a motion? Somebody?
No, no one made a motion, so we have no, no changes.
Well, I'll make a motion to add to the agenda for an update on the superintendent search because I feel that we owe our constituents that update.
Do I have a second? So the chair will second that. So do I have any further discussion?
So I guess I am, would love to have that conversation, but I'm just trying to be mindful of, again, does that put us into, are there any risks associated with us from an open meeting perspective of adding that significant condition? I would love to hear it, I want to hear it, and I want our community to know, I just want to make sure that we're doing this right. That's all. And I'm not an expert in that, and I'd be the first to say that.
Now, this is, would be informational only with no votes. So we can either do it through that, or we can do it through other means. All right. Hang on, no further discussion. Dan, how do you think?
I abstain.
Okay. Do you have a? I hope not. Kelly?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Two for, one abstention, one against. That motion passes.
We are on the agenda, Mr. Chair, are we adding that?
Since the consultant has to drive the distance, I would recommend toward the beginning.
Yes, I agree, Kathy. So before our discussion about budget?
Yeah, that's for... All right. Public comment?
Actually, do we have to ratify the updates?
Yes, we do.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, now that we've got a, do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Dan, second by Kelly, to approve the amended agenda. Any further discussion? Hang on. Dan?
I'll vote yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Can I vote yes if she stands? All right. Now, public comment? No public comment.
I do have one question. On the top of this, it says January 22nd, 2024. Is that an issue?
At the very top.
Is that just like a...
It's minor, but we can...
Okay, got it. I just wanted to question before.
It's not 2024 anymore.
I just wanted to, like, have that noted in there.
Thank you, Eve.
All right.
I get it.
Okay. Next item is approval of the minutes. Any passing?
Motion to approve?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Minutes? Hang on, Dan.
I'll abstain.
Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Three for, one abstention. All right. Next item is update on the superintendent search. Glenn? If you could please come to the microphone. If you could please give us an update on where the search is, how the, how it's going?
Mr. Chairman, so we have completed two of the site visits of the three finalists. The third finalist will visit the district tomorrow. They have had a really nice series of visits with the school leaders and school staff, and I'm encouraged, you're in a good place. They'll be coming back next week for final interviews. We will during the rest of this week be completing the reference checking and have a reference summary for you. I had hoped to do that sooner, but we've been distracted by the, by the site visits that have made it a bit difficult. The process has been fairly smooth, and things are going as well as we would hope they would go, and I expect that you will be able to make a decision that will be in the, very much in the best interests of the district next week when you make your decision based on the candidates that you're seeing.
Thank you. Any questions for Glenn? So I will say that the committee members did submit potential questions for the interviews for next week. I have reviewed those with Glenn. He gave a few suggestions, and I will be redistributing those back to individual members for your review prior to the interviews next week. Any other questions?
Will we be provided with something to make notes on for the questions?
Yeah, once we, once each of you have finalized the questions, then Glenn will put that into something that can go into your binders as far as taking notes on each of the individual questions.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I expect that I'll receive a set of the final questions ready for printing at some point soon?
Yes.
Okay.
Hopefully tomorrow, if the committee members can...
That'd be great.
...can review them. Since what, what we have is what they submitted, I expect their review to be quick.
Okay. It's a very good set of drafted questions, very thorough. The search committee also developed a very good set of, of questions. I think the candidates respected the search committee, and I think they're appreciative of the energy and diligence that went into putting those together. And the, I think the people of Mashpee owe a debt of thanks to the chair of the search committee for leading the process and helping us get through without unnecessary delays.
I agree.
Thank you.
I think the chair and all the members of the search committee need to be commended for the hard work and effort that they put in to review all the applicants, to go through all the interview... To go through all, and take all the time to complete the interviews and make the hard decisions of which candidates to recommend to this board may consider final consideration. So I thank each and every one on behalf of the committee. Thank you, Glenn.
I'll say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item of business is the update on the FY '26 budget. I'll turn it over to Ms. Lopes.
Yep. There we go. Bouncing back and forth. All right, so at your place is a memo, basically kind of explaining where we are. We met with the town manager, Rodney Collins, on Friday, February 17th. At that point, he asked that we look at the budget and consider having $150,000 out of that. We are going to get seemingly adequate capital improvement discussions. So with that, to make that $150,000, we did get an increase than our anticipated circuit breaker of $97,000, and then due to some retirements not necessarily coming as we thought they would, we were able to reduce that line $53,000 to come to the $150,000. It basically leaves our staffing alone, our supply lines alone, et cetera. If you look at the budget sheet, the incredible Ms. Lopes has highlighted in yellow, the COOMS line there is where the reductions in obligations will be coming from, and the out-of-district tuitions, which is what Circuit Breaker is a state reimbursement for, that is, there is a change in that line as well. All of this basically brings our budget down to $26,114,347, which represents a 3.9% increase over last year's appropriation. So I suggest I share that with you for your approval. Those updates have been made, thank you, Mrs. V, in our budget narrative as well, and you can see those changes in there, especially on page four, we get into about two-thirds of the way down, the whole $26,114,347, and it's a little bit negative. So for your consideration, that was a bit.
So did we have somebody at COOMS that was going to retire this, this, for FY '26, who decided not to, or?
So the COOMS line had the most amount of money that I could take from, for this reduction. It was a topic of conversation when we met with the town manager on Friday, that the retirements were actuals of the information that I had to date, and if there was going to be an issue come April of next year, then we'd have a conversation of how the town would support us in funding those retirement obligations. So he is aware that it could be, we might not, we might have a deficit in that account, and we'd have to figure out a way to cover it. Right now, he has not requested us to use any additional school choice funds, so I do believe that where the budget stands, if we don't have a lot of absences throughout the course of the year, we can make it up in different ways. And people put in for the retirement because of the incentive and the buyouts way ahead of time, and sometimes they do want to push it off a year. So I'll know more information as we start the next school year, but I am comfortable with that reduction in that place with the, knowing that the town is supportive of us if we have to go back and have a conversation. Thank you.
Yep, we have a motion to approve the FY '26, the change to the FY '26 school district budget.
I'll make the motion to accept the change and approve the budget with said adjustments.
You have a second.
All right. Any further discussion? I'll just say I don't like it, but I will accept it. It could be worse, and I guess I was expecting others from the town managers, so I gladly take what it is that he's recommending. All right, any further discussion? Hang on, Dan, how do you think?
I'll vote to approve.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Thank you.
Just so the committee knows, I will be sending a memo in the budget over to the town manager tomorrow as part of the budget timeline, so he can include it for the main town meeting.
Thank you.
Next item is the subcommittee working group, superintendent evaluation.
Do you want to take it, or?
You do.
Yes, we met on Monday. Unfortunately, I had to be remote, but Dan was in person with Dr. Thompson. We reviewed the progress that has been made on the identified review areas, and we looked at the survey results that were sent out, communications, overall pretty positive results for the most part. Kind of reviewed some of the other items of, you know, that were identified as things that superintendent would want to work on in the district. Trying to think, what else are we, am I missing something? I feel like I'm missing, well, we have them in here. So, and you have those results also, it looks like, so that's good. And I would say it was, I felt it was very good in the meeting. Again, great, it's like, it's different, you know, it's, it's a new process, so we're seeing a little bit more data-driven information in the evidence of the implementation, so I appreciate that. So yeah, that was, that was what we met. We're going to keep moving forward on these goals to the next few things, I believe. I don't know, if anybody wants to jump in and say anything else on this, I feel like it was a lifetime.
No, I would just add, I have to commend Superintendent Thompson about kind of your presentation, and what we discussed, I think that, and all the things that we've laid out as a committee around not just this plan, but some of the additional requests we had in advance communication, figuring out connectedness, from all those pieces, you know, recovered and seem to be advancing in a very positive way. So it was a very, I think, telling of us hopefully getting to our end goal, which is to see these things continue to advance as we were going through this search process. So, so thank you for your time.
My pleasure.
Any other comments? Just saying, it's always challenging when someone comes in and they have to pick up a process and do the screening, people carrying loads without the wheels falling off the wagon. You know, specifically, that was what he asked you to do, is to keep the wheels on the wagon until we were able to complete and identify someone who could take over this role on a permanent basis, so I commend you for the work that you've done, so thank you.
Thank you.
There's no other comments, we'll move on?
All right, outreach working group. So Brian and I did have an opportunity the following Wednesday from that meeting with Kathy and myself to go over the outreach working plan. In that meeting, we talked a lot about the engagement survey for parents, caregivers, and for students, looking at the questions that we've utilized over the past couple of years, seeing if we wanted to make any adjustments to it. Brian and I had a couple of thoughts and perspective alterations to the questions. Some of them were wording, some of them, some of them were actually just prospectively including an additional question or two, so that's something that we'd like to present back to the full committee at some point, just to get a review of whether or not it would be approved and appropriate to alter slash add a couple of prompts. I believe you had an update too about communication with students.
Yeah, so we had, so I had my middle high school advisory committee meeting today, and we did go over that set of questions after I was able to read my check of scratch in our meeting and helped decipher the hyperbole things with, with Mrs. V. And they, they had very little feedback or changes or additions, so we're going to finalize that, and I'll share it with the subcommittee for their review, and then we'll go forward from there.
Wonderful. I think the only other thing that we discussed as well, and I think we're going to do a little homework on, was the format of the questions themselves. My question was whether or not, at what level those have been vetted. In other words, in healthcare, we always talk about making sure that the questions are worded at a kind of an eighth grade reading level for individuals who may have English as their second language, or, you know, may find, you know, these questions more palatable because a lot of them are pretty in-depth questions, so I wasn't sure when the original framework was created, if we had ever kind of passed it through that lens to make sure that it's a, a survey that can be really, you know, chewed on by the folks that are going to be receiving it.
Nicole's throwing that in, what, 2018, 2019?
Wow, yeah, it's been around for a long, long time.
At least 2018 or 19, somewhere in that.
I don't believe that there's ever been any specific vetting from that lens, and if you want to do that, I would think that the committee would be interested in seeing the results.
Yeah, I would love to maybe have it pass through, you know, that process, just because I don't think, I think maybe a chair, there's no, you know, million, a different term coming on, no million dollar words in there that I think would, you know, really confuse folks, but even just reading it for myself, I was like, oh, I could see how this may be interpreted slightly different, or, so I would like to at least pass it through something, some filter before we make it live.
Before this, seeing the results on that. What's the timing on when you're planning to do the survey?
Can't recall when we've historically sent it out. I'm not having a brain fart on that.
We've usually sent it out at, like, during February break, and then we leave it open for, I want to say, two or three weeks, and then we review the data, like, the preliminary data, but we really dig into it during our retreat, well, that's typically what the timeline's been. So...
So maybe you go up one maybe?
Yeah, it's not, it's going to be a quick turnaround. It doesn't have to go out then, but I think we've, we've kind of gotten people used to it, I think, if that, I don't know.
And I think the edits are, you know, prospectively minor enough that it shouldn't be heavy lift to kind of go through those additional ones.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yep.
How do you plan to communicate this to all families so that they are aware that the survey is open? Have you discussed new means to make sure that families in the district are aware that this is happening? I think there's possibly some concerns that not everyone is being made aware still, and I guess I just, with something that big, I would, I would like to try to make sure we at least maintain what our response, if not increase what our response rate has been. It's been a healthy response rate, but I think if we can ensure that we're really getting it out in front of as many families as we can.
Yeah, I will say, we did not discuss that. I think we can bring it up into our next meeting, and thank you for that feedback. I think that that's really important.
The other, the other part of that is, you know, typically, we have been able to get a fairly high participation rate from the students, and we need to encourage each of the building principals to allow time for the survey to be done during class time or during homeroom so that it does get done, because otherwise, if you just ask someone to do it, more likely than not, they won't.
And we've learned from mistakes on how that was implemented in the past, so I think, you know, the building principals will definitely be able to write that feedback.
Yep. I'll bring, we'll bring that to the next one. Thank you.
Now, when we send out those surveys to the families, is it in the language that the family speaks?
Yes, my recollection is that it's a Google document that has the capacity to be translated through that service.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Which I will say, I'm sorry, I'm backtracking here for a moment, but as we were looking at some of the feedback from the, it was one of the surveys that I think you did that we talked about in the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, actually, one of the responses, Kelly, to that point was in Portuguese, right? So the, the narrative component was still in Portuguese, which was really cool to see, so clearly, at least one of our non-English speaking families was comfortable enough to fill it out and, and respond back in their native tongue, which was really beautiful to...
That's awesome.
Yep. So our hopes is that we could encourage all of our community members to, to complete this one.
Next item is the policy subcommittee.
All right, so me and Brian met with Dr. Thompson on January 16th and went through a couple of different local towns and wording of what we believed would work for here in Mashpee, and we did pick one. We determined, you know, I think the biggest thing that is going to come across all school committees in the state of Massachusetts is the way that the wording is, all it says is a passing grade. So then they're going to leave it up to the districts to see what we determine a passing grade. So we went through all of that with the three of us in figuring out what Mashpee would consider a passing grade in order for, you know, our children to graduate and get a diploma. I know we did have one student, did you get an update on that student?
Yes.
To figure out if they were good?
They would, if this, if this is the adopted policy, they would be good.
They would be good. Okay. Do you want me to go through this, or do you want me to... Do you want me to go through this, or do you want me to read until we approve it, we go through that?
This is a first read, right? We're not voting on it tonight, are we?
No, it's first read.
Thank you.
So we determined that for the class of 25 and 26, it's a successful competency determination requires a qualifying score on the MCAS prior to December 1st of 2024, or completing the following classwork with at least, and I would like to change.
Yeah, it should be 64.
I don't even like that it says D. You know, 65%. We, we said, you know, there are communities around us that are saying a 60, but as Mashpee and expecting our students to achieve high academic performances, a 60 in my book was failing. When we all graduated from high school, if we didn't have a 70, we didn't pass. Things have changed, times have changed, so we agreed that a 65% average in English, nine and 10, algebra one and geometry, or integrated geometry honors, or its equivalent, biology or physics or chemistry, would be considered, you know, a passing grade in order to graduate.
Well, by definition, sorry, F means failure, and anything above is a passing grade, yeah?
Yes.
So if we're using that as a rubric, that seems to make sense to me. So, Dr. Thompson, what I'm hearing is that D is 64 is the cutoff for a D?
Yeah, 64 to 66.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. So a D, there are other towns nearby that are just using a D minus, which would be 60 or higher. I haven't seen any other districts go to the C minus level, but we are talking.
Are they?
I'm talking anywhere.
Okay.
But we are talking about, you know, competency, you know, what is that? The, the reality is, is that this policy will probably be revisited before the end of the school year, or the following school year, based on the fact that we will now have a governor's task force working group to work on, to sort of statewide competency, so this, this basically is a bridge until that work happens probably.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I, I have a question, why no U.S. history requirement?
These are based on what the MCAS is testing, so these are not graduation requirements? So the graduation requirements, if you actually flip the page.
That will have.
I want this on the second.
The graduation requirement, these are to codify that they've met a competency determination. So basically, the MCAS, the MCAS basically tests algebra and geometry, okay, and tests ninth and 10th grade English, and tests A-science, so that is, you know, and then individual districts set their own graduation requirements. Mashpee, thank goodness, is using Mashcore, which is that career and college readiness standard, the state has asked all districts to adopt, so that's a pretty high standard, but that's, that's a different standard, so hopefully, and what is the case, most of, almost all of our students are meeting this competency determination by the time they are finishing sophomore year.
So the graduation requirements don't change?
Right.
Just the competency requirements?
Right, the district has to, has to have a policy to identify what is competency, because you can have a kid take, get the credits by passing, but that's not the same as passing, it's that and MCAS, or it was that and passing MCAS.
So then my question is, we have IKF graduation requirements and competency determination, and then we have file IKF graduation requirements?
Right, so.
So are you combining these two?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, which, so it'll be the language from both of these in one IKF?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the, and the title at the top will be graduation requirements and competency determination, so the title will change slightly.
So, so just to clarify, in order for a student to graduate from Mashpee, they must meet the graduation requirements and also pass the competency determination, correct?
Correct. In order to get a, in order to get a Mashpee diploma, that's what they have to do, yes. Before November 6th, they would have to pass the NCAS and meet the graduation requirements. This part here is to take the place of the NCAS.
So if I was reading the two pages, page 19 in our packet, would come first, and page 18 would come second?
That was just what I asked, they're gonna combine them into one?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So the top where it says file IKF, that's, that's.
That is our current, that is our current policy.
Right.
This, the first page is going to be inserted into that.
So in all actuality, that wouldn't be bolded, that would be look, look like competency determination on this one.
It would almost be like, it would have competency determination first?
Yeah.
Then have graduation requirements second.
I just think it needs to make sure, there, there needs to be wording that is explicit, it says you have to do both, and I'm not sure, I guess that's what I'm looking for.
That was my confusion as well, that's why I asked about.
I, I don't see that wording that says you have to do both.
It says it right here, actually, down right here. Fourth line from the bottom starts with the previous school is aligned with MMHS coursework, oh wait, no, my coursework.
So if, may I, on page 19, what we already have on file?
Yeah.
It seems as simple as just adding, once you folks restructure the title, of just including the fact that you need to also pass the competency determination.
Right.
Right, so I, I agree, I think if, if that can just be edited into that line, plus the combination.
So the first, if we do it this way, like you said, 19 first, 18 second?
Yeah.
It says on page 18, the awarding of a fully certified diploma from the Mashpee Public School requires, in addition to the above stated criteria, a demonstration of mastery in 10th grade Massachusetts curriculum framework.
Okay, that's what I was asking, so.
So 19 would come, so the title here would come to the top of page 19, and then it would have graduation requirements, and then under that, it would have competency determination.
When we do a second read, can we see it and find what's in there?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Part of my, part of my challenge was getting to the original, to, I did.
Cherry was clearly missed.
I have one more question, fire, that's both of these. Four years of physical education, is that the state's, the fire, is that Smash?
That's the state, I believe.
That's what, I was just about to ask that question, because it's only a year of gym and a half a year of health to graduate from Mashpee.
I mean, I just, part of me is like, I'd like to see two years of, because that is two years of the arts personally, because I feel strongly that that's part of a long round of education, but.
Well, and again, if you have, if you have a student that wants to take more art, they can, they can take more art.
And I believe it's, it's Brady, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's three and a half years of electives that you have to take?
Yeah.
So these graduation requirements come from the state? This is what the state is saying?
Well, those, that's what the, the state recommendation was that all districts adopt Mashcore, that is Mashcore.
Thank you.
There are districts who have not adopted Mashcore, that doesn't necessarily set our students up to be able to go to college or university, especially the state of Massachusetts.
And we could add to that if we wanted to.
You could.
We don't have to just leave it this way. We could add, Kathy, like you suggested, two years of the arts.
Well, realistically, I just, it was more just a curiosity question, I couldn't remember, because I know we, we updated this, like, almost a year ago, so.
Right.
I knew we had looked at it, and I couldn't remember, and it was more just me trying to remember, again, I apologize, my brain is not necessarily fire from all fifteen.
And it, and it is one of those things, you, you wanna be able to have, you know, high standards, but also enough flexibility, so you have students leaving your high school with skills and, and credentials and experiences there, and help them with what they want to do, so if you have, if you have someone who, who wants to be a chef, maybe an extra, you know, two-dimensional art, maybe not where they want to spend their time, not that it's bad, but you wanna have enough flexibility so they have those choices.
Yeah, I believe on the requirements, it's, you have, there's a category for fine arts, and then there's also a category for electives, and when you complete the two years of world language, that can also be double dipped into electives, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, we're gonna re-ask you.
Do a second read.
That works. We have another meeting.
Yeah, we have to, we have to push that out.
We had to push it.
We had to push it.
It was supposed to be, I think, this week, but we.
It was supposed to be Friday, we're gonna.
Yeah, we're gonna push it. What'd you say, February's meeting for second read, Dawn?
Yeah.
We'll have it up this week.
Definitely.
You have another one?
Yes. You have policy, and it's kind of one of those ones of, we're not quite sure why it's not in there, but the parent advisory council's meeting, we actually do this, it is part of state law, but we don't have the policy in our, they have policy manual, so.
So we have a parent advisory council?
We have.
We have, we have.
C-PAC and an L-PAC.
We have C-PAC.
What about general parents? A general parent?
Each school has its own principal, a school council, so.
Yep.
That, all right. But those aren't parents?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, they are.
So they are?
They're on it for both KCC and CLA.
Yeah, it's parents and staff, half and half.
Okay, and then we have an L-PAC and a C-PAC, and a S-PAC, okay.
Any questions on that one?
Can we hold on, or is this dog?
This is first read, right?
Mm-hmm.
Almost a housekeeping item, though, I mean, I'd be inclined to dispense with the first read personally, make a motion to postpone the first read.
All right.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Harry Dunn, Dan, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
I vote yes, yeah, so that's adopted, but, all right.
Well, don't mean, you don't want a second motion for adoption?
Oh, I'm sorry, do we adopt, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we do.
He's just, I'm thinking.
The party made a motion to adopt policy.
But wait a minute, isn't that down in new business? Did we?
We are in new business.
Yeah, we are.
Oh, did we skip that?
We skipped.
Jump around the suburbs of the policy.
Well, we're here, so.
That's good.
And then there's nothing on the agenda that says we have to vote?
You technically don't have to list that out there, I mean, we can take action on anything, as long as we have a forum, so.
Okay.
I mean, if you don't want to vote on it.
No, I'm fine, I'm just.
I mean, we already have all these in place, I guess that's what I'm thinking, is why I have a second read when we already do this, it's just a housekeeping item, it's my fault, but, I mean.
No, that's fine.
Everybody feels differently.
No, that works, we can vote.
So, so you made a motion?
No, I did not.
So I made a motion to adopt.
I make a motion to adopt policy KBG, parent advisory councils packs, as presented.
You have a second?
A second.
And a motion by Kathy, and a second by Kelly, any further discussion? All right, let's get this one taken here. Dan?
Yeah, well, yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
All right, so, discuss what we need, and we adopt.
Go back up to the.
Yeah, let's see if I can finish that before we do the other priest here. Is that it for the policy subcommittee?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item is in regard to, under unfinished privileges, appointment of the school representative for the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee, which did have a meeting yesterday, and I had before the chair that we did not have anyone available.
Surprise, surprise, guess who attended? I did.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, 'cause originally, I know we had tossed out me being the person to attend this month's meeting, and since I missed the last meeting, I took it upon myself to show up.
Okay.
So I did go to the meeting last night, it was a very efficient meeting, in the sense that they definitely go through their agenda within that hour. They did give sort of a background for myself and for other folks who were in the crowd about kind of the way that the original inclusion diversity committee was created, and specifically when they were completing or creating the committee, there had been a desire to have, obviously, a school voice as part of that, and digging a little bit further into that, the original recommendation from the construction framework was to either, was, I think, was the quote, something along the lines of someone who can make choices internally, so, which led me to believe that the request is, you know, falls not to a school committee member, but once we have a decision about superintendent, assistant superintendent, or someone who has internal decision-making power, to be able to be that voice, also because some of the interventions that they do, or some of the connections that they have within the school, it makes more sense to them to have it be a staff member opposed to a committee member. So with that feedback from their chair, I think that goes into our question about who should be appointed to represent the school, so that's just my feedback from last evening.
It is an interesting question in my mind, because on the committee currently, are there other individuals who are in decision-making roles within the town?
So Winnie is there for the tribal council.
Okay.
I'm trying to think, I'm newer to some of the faces there, so I couldn't per se say their background within the town, but I, so I can't answer that question fully, I should say.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, logistically, to me, it makes sense, you know, this is, also given the fact that some of the relationship with superintendent DeBoer and some of the connectedness that existed there, with their, you know, Race Amnesty Day event, and, you know, how the school has kind of played a part in that, you know, they were very vocal about that, so appropriately vocal.
Dan, thank you for going, you weren't at the last meeting, so we didn't want to nominate you to go without, without your permission, so thank you very much for stepping up and going.
But, because at the end of the day, I don't think it would have met the desire of their committee, but.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So hearing that, I guess my question is, whoever is appointed won't be beginning until July, so we have almost six months of meetings that they'll be having, are we going to put, like, a rotating schedule of us, are you going to continue to go, I mean, how do we, I understand what you're saying, that that's not their end game, but I do feel having someone from the schools connected is valuable, now that the search committee is kind of winding down, there's possibility, you know, that they could free up some other people, I guess I just, I'm curious what others' thoughts on that are, you know, should we rotate, should we, I don't know, thoughts?
So I guess my response question would be, is there anyone consistent in, I guess, within central office that could be a good fit for this? And the reason I ask that piece of things is because, again, some of the requests that they have for desired outcomes of their committee really, in my viewpoint, are above, they're operational, and I don't think any one of the five of us would be in a position as a committee member to be able to make decisions without coming back to this group, the central office group, I already got a question for, for Ms. Loops as of the conversation yesterday, so I, I think that, again, it needs to be someone that's in a position.
We do have a difficulty in the fact that they meet on Tuesday nights, and that is our negotiation night, so.
Unfortunately, they are not flexible, they have their days.
Wow.
Oh, yeah.
I realized it's Tuesday, it's not Monday, so that feels pre-.
So with that being said, how, in previous iterations, how were Superintendent DeBoer and Hope able to attend those meetings?
Negotiations have been always on a Tuesday night.
Not always on a Tuesday night, or something.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they pick Tuesdays as their negotiation night, yeah.
Usually they're Thursdays.
Okay, got it, okay, so there's been a change there, okay.
But, you know, every time, potentially. But, you know, e- every time is potentially different, and then moved in, um, they could have sit, sit, uh, negotiation sessions, plus change, uh, because stuff comes up, so. Well, that, next meeting will be, what, February? February seventh, eighteenth, right?
That's, uh-
That's break.
That's break, yep.
I mean, after March, the end of March, I may be able to help out, but before that, I'm busy on Tuesdays.
Thank you, Kelly, I think it's, for me, it's less about-
Yes.
About, it's more about compatibility, right, I think, that, again, that's, for their particular committee, that's not what they have desired in this particular person, and, again, I felt very comfortable being there, it was a really great discussion, but also, at the same time, felt very well-equipped to be able to, um, answer the questions appropriately, uh, without some fumbling to make sure I didn't put my foot in my mouth for, for the district, because it was very operational. Okay.
I mean, with the understanding that we are in the process here of filling our administration, basically, I mean, are they amenable, you think, to letting it-
I think it would be-
Be a vacant seat until we have those people in place that can then determine who would be the appropriate member, like, do you think that, is that something we could approach the chair and the committee with, to ask them?
Yeah, I think they'd probably prefer to have someone at the invitation, even if it was not the ideal, uh, person.
I have a thought.
We, we do have students on the committee, so I do think it is important to have someone from the schools there to be at those meetings with them, um, they're great advocates for the school, and I think we should have someone there to support them. I don't know if it's someone, if it has to be the consistent person every time, if they'd be okay with someone different depending on our schedules, um, I'm looking ahead at my schedule, there are some means that I can make, if that's something that is needed, um, I just don't want to see our students there on their own.
I will say that they've already acquired tasks, the students, the two students that are there, so I agree with, um, Ashley, they probably would, would hope us to have a team member from the school present.
The rest of the students, they're seniors.
They're seniors, they're-
But I, I understand recruitment's already kind of begun.
Yeah, they have one identified individual, they're looking for a second at this point.
Currently with it being school break on the, if they are holding a February eighteenth meeting, I will be in the office anyway, completing payroll, so I can attend the next meeting, if the committee would like me to.
Thank you.
That would be appreciative, and then maybe, um, we can think about other, um, resources that might be, uh, amenable to, and then, being on now, on Tuesday night.
Would it be any issues, Mr. Chair, to reach out to the chair and just kind of, like what Kathy said, it may not be the same person every time, but we will have, just so they're aware of, you know?
We, we will have representation, it may not be the same person.
Right, okay, thank you.
I also will say this, and final comment on my end, I, I also want to be mindful of some of the new things that they are working on or discussing as it relates to, you know, some concerns they have with changes in the community, and, uh, some of the other stuff that's happening, kind of, across our nation with the EIB work. So, I think representation is important, um, but as consistent as we can be with having someone go, not saying that it needs to be you, uh, but I think as those discussions heat up and more information comes out about, you know, those pain points for them, um, they're going to be looking for, um, you know, an ally to be able to figure out how to navigate it, and if it's different folks every time, until we have someone, we may make a challenge.
Somebody's got a-
I, I got that, yeah, no, I, I got that.
Alright, thank you, Dan.
Yep.
We appreciate, uh, you having the opportunity, yeah, alright. Supreme General update, not recovered yet.
Job description, oh, no, mid-cycle update.
Yeah, sorry, I know, Supreme General, I don't know if there's anything more to add to that.
Yeah, I just want to point out that I did put this, um, kind of, update together, uh, with some notes in the goal document, uh, at the end of that, there is a copy of the communication survey that was sent out, uh, January sixth, right after, uh, right after the winter break, uh, lets you kind of digest that, um, it does indicate that the, uh, change in communication strategies is being received well. At the end of that is a little update on some of our NTSS documentation using data and planning, uh, there, so I wanted you folks to see that, um, and we will keep going forward.
Thank you, sir. Alright. Now we're to the library media job description summary bracket.
Okay, so, uh, in front of you, as we, um, we are moving through and as we are hiring folks, we are reviewing job descriptions, uh, this is one that was, uh, outdated, uh, we did look at some other districts, uh, we then ended with our partners with the, uh, with the Mashpee Teachers Union to, uh, get some feedback there, this is our agreed-upon, um, job description for your review and approval.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the job description for a library media specialist as presented.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Further discussion?
I guess, I have one quick question, um, I guess I'm just, I just want to make sure, like, if a student's reading above their grade level, that this job description will allow that library media specialist to help them discover something at their level, and not just keep them in that grade, just because they're in second grade, they can only read second grade level, it doesn't preclude that, correct?
I will, I, I would hope not, and I will say that, um, you know, my experience with the KCC li- library has been, uh, Nathan has been very interested in some chapter-y type books that he cannot read, and that was encouraged and welcomed, um, so I would hope they ask.
Actually, it's a very, I just missed it, appropriate reading levels, nevermind.
Yeah, so, if you look at the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven,
Yep.
Bullet down, support students in selecting books at appropriate reading levels and encouraging independent reading habits.
I spoke too fast, can I apologize?
It's okay. I have to say, that is, that is something about the Mashpee Public Schools, they do meet kids where they are, one of the strengths, so.
Just, um, a curious question regarding to, um, the bullet point regarding support the development of early writing skills, um, by providing resources and opportunity for creative expression, um, I guess I don't picture a, you know, library with writing, um-
Writing skills?
Yeah, with developing writing, development of writing skills, early writing skills, um, how, can you give me a little context on how that happens currently, or what you're hoping it happens?
Dawn, I can't hear you, I don't know what you're saying, sorry.
Okay, am I talking, I wanted to talk to you, but, um-
Alright, while I'm getting this, I don't know what you're saying.
Okay, so, the supportive develop, um, support the development of early writing skills by providing resources and opportunities for creative ex- expression, can you just elaborate what you're thinking that?
The librarian does, uh, everything pretty much with literacy, she is asking students to read, they perform at times, they do graduate readers theater, they, um, will write, uh, the evaluation of a book in, in their own opinion, make a synopsis of that, um, they are also writing code sometimes in the library, they, they do multi, multi-tasks within the library. I think Meg Smith, if you've ever had the privilege of being in the library with Meg, you see that, um, students are engaged in reading, writing, speaking, listening, all aspects of literacy.
So that's a, just a continuation of the writing skills that they're developing in the classroom?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, she works, um, with the literacy coach as well, so she does know, like, where students are supposed to be, what they're, how you're writing, what you're writing, um, she's also been training with her handwriting with that here, so she reinforces those skills as well, so students have the correct grip in their, their handwriting at the same time. She, she just supports, and that's what we want any librarian to do, is to support the literacy initiative across all grades.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cage.
Alright, if there are no other questions, strike a motion to approve this.
Do you have a motion, any second?
We just got a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your vote. David?
Oh, yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, alright, thanks, thank you. Next item of business is appointment of, uh, physician.
Yes, well, uh, direct your attention to H23, which is the memo, um, I am recommending that Dr. Gregory Parkinson, uh, receive a one-year extension to his current school physician consultant contract for the Mashpee Public Schools, um, Dr. Parkinson's a pediatrician and pharmacist since nineteen ninety-five, has care for many of our Mashpee children, um, and he has been a huge benefit to our overall health program, we'd love to have him continue.
Is this, being new and not having to have done this before, is, is it normal to do one-year extensions, or do, have we done longer?
Dr. Parkinson is going to be retiring soon, uh, so, we actually, I think, are two years out from when he initially told us he was going to retire, so, we're just doing one-year extensions at this point.
Yeah, so this, this actually gives, gives Mashpee a little more time to find someone who wants to do this, it is a requirement, um, and with the current crunch for healthcare, there's not a lot of physicians who want to do it, and it probably is something that should be pursued.
Have we reached out to his partners at his practice?
Um, I have not done any additional research of contacting anyone, but he did commit for the next year, so we have, you know, another six months to, yeah.
Because personally, that's where my son goes, um, and all three, Dr. Parkinson included, Dr. Lind and Dr. Emily are absolutely amazing, and any of them would be an asset to our kids, so, that's just a suggestion.
Make a motion to approve the extension of Dr. Parkinson's consulting contract for, for FY twenty-six?
Any second.
Any further discussion? Harry Dunn?
I vote yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Alright. On the table were copies of the, um, proposed agendas for, that are coming up for January twenty-seventh, uh, January twenty-ninth for the, um, student advisory council, and also for the school committee right now.
Could I have a copy of this student advisory committee one? Don't have it.
Here you go.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify your opinion on some of the items the chairman and I will read on the desk, if the time is appropriate, please.
Yeah, we were just, wanted to clarify additional items, um, not for discussion. Anything else that you want to add, or needs to be brought forth?
Um, I did want to just touch on, we have the, um, the election for the student advisory committee coming on Friday, it'll be, um, there'll be announcement for the kids, um, that the forum will be open from homeroom to the end of the day, the results will be announced at the end of the day, um, we have seven candidates so far that have sent in their things, um, and the deadline was last Wednesday, um, and then, following that, Ms. Lynch and I have yet to decide if we're doing, we will do a meeting either on Monday or Tuesday after school with the kids, and that'll also be announced, um, for anyone who wants to come see it.
So you're, you're doing the meeting after school, Monday or Tuesday, and then you're meeting with us on Wednesday, correct?
Yeah, just to do sort of a hello, this is what's going to happen, here's how this works.
Introduction.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else that needs to be brought forth for the committee's consideration tonight?
I got a couple of questions, um, on just where we stand, um, what is the update on the athletic wing of high school?
Well, we are, so, currently, we are in the process of, we're, we're waiting for air quality results to come back, um, we're hoping they're going to be back this afternoon, this evening, I actually checked my email, there's an report, uh, once we get the okay there, then we can occupy the gym, uh, the hallway and the locker rooms are going to be a bit longer, because there's still things to build and repair, so, the water came in, came down, um, ceiling pieces need to be taken out, there needs to be reconstruction of those pieces that got wet, um, that's going to take a little bit longer, but we are hopeful that by early next week, we will be able to at least use the gym for games and such, we still will not have the locker rooms, but we'll have more functionality and be able to, um, use our home to have our home games.
And there was, um, no, no residual damage that got through the wall to the gymnasium floor that we know of?
They, uh, there was a little bit of water that got onto the floor, they were on it immediately, they have dried it up, so there is no long-term damage, there is a space in the floor that I haven't actually gone, it's been, like, encased in plastic, and I'm, like, afraid if I break the seal, I'll be going into, like, some sort of, like, predator, like, thing or something, I'm not quite sure, so, um, so I have not been actually into the gym to look at, uh, the work there, but I know that they were going to refinish that, it's underneath the bleachers. Um, a little bit of water there, not a lot, not as much as there could have been, uh, the floor is in good condition, except for that, um, so as long as they can get the air handlers up and the air good, and all the smoke smell out of there, then we should be able to use it, the other piece, finishing, uh, ceilings, walls, and cleaning is going to take a little bit longer, I don't have a timeframe on that.
I thought we had another case of, oh my god, there's a fire at the high school today.
No, actually, actually, well-
Thank you for the communication, Ms. Brady.
Yep, um, yeah, that was actually, um, you know, the work going on produces dust at times, the smoke detectors detect dust, that's what smoke is, and they worked.
And I heard, and I heard they did a good job.
Yeah, well-
Even though it was freezing.
Yeah, we did, uh, we were able to get them, they, it was right as everybody was, was arriving, and I think they were back in the building in-
It was after fifteen minutes.
Yeah, it was great.
Ten or fifteen minutes. And I sent, I sent a message out, I believe, on Sunday about dressing for the weather.
Yep.
It is possible to have frostbite in this weather in fifteen minutes or less, so please, wear a coat, have your skin covered, please, thank you.
And then the other thing was, the sign on one fifty-one, it has been three weeks since that sign's been out.
Yeah.
I know, I know that I reached out to you about it, have we gotten, like, anything, why it's not working, what happened, like-
We've already been in touch with Airtronics, the company that services the, um, sign, and we've had an issue with it in the past, so we just need to-
I was wondering, did it get too cold, did, like, things start to-
No, it happened, it happened the same day of the fire, so I'm not quite sure, was something from that, or not, but we are aware of that.
Yeah, okay.
That was my assumption.
Okay.
Trying to.
And I think that's it, that's all my questions.
Even your absences on Monday, who is going to be attending?
I don't know, I would have to check.
Can you just send me an email so that we can make sure that?
Yeah, I'll check with Marielle and Paige tomorrow, see if they would be interested.
If not, can we, Principal?
Yes. I will.
Brady, sorry.
Talk to her about that.
Can we call a principal down? Just if, if we can't get one of the Student Advisory Council members to come on Monday for the interviews, would you be able to recommend a student from nine to 12 to sit in and ask the student questions at the interview?
All right. Anything else? I think we're done, wrap up time tonight. Fish it.
Very good.
All right. Motion, adjourned.
Second.